Morning, everyone. Welcome to the Bradenton City Council meeting, Wednesday, October 28th, 2020. City council chambers will be open to the public. All are welcome to attend this meeting. Social distancing and screening will be enforced. Any member of the public wishing to comment may do so at the meeting. Citizens may all submit their comments in writing to cityclerk@cityofbradenton.com, or voicemail by calling 941-932-9437 on the Tuesday before the meeting. Mayor and council may not receive your comments before the meeting if not received by this deadline. And as always, we begin our deliberations with an invocation in the Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation will be led today by Tom Pelk, lead pastor at the Church of Bradenton. Pastor, please come forward. Please stand.
Dear Lord Jesus, we just bless your holy name this morning. You are high and lifted up, you are rightfully adored, and yet you are right here among us. You gave your life for us. Lord, and you walk with us this day, and I thank you for that. Lord, I pray wisdom for these, your servant leaders, a spirit of discernment when they don't have the luxury of choosing between right and wrong, black and white, just something easy. But, Lord, when they've got to choose between two or three less-than-ideal options, give them that discernment. Lord God, may a spirit of unity and peace just reign over this council. Lord God, we pray together that you would continue to come against this plague, Lord God, over COVID-19, that those that are here in this city, in our county, Lord God, that are struggling with this, would find healing, that you would just be the strength and comfort for their family members, Lord God. Lord, I pray for each one of these council members, for our mayor, and each one represented. Lord, long after, none of us have the titles that we hold today, the roles that we play today. We're just people. And, Lord God, I'm mindful this morning that each one of these servants, or they've got so much. And when they're done with the duties of this day for this city, Lord God, as spouses and parents and grandparents, they've got the stuff of life. And some of them, Lord God, they've got some real hard things that they are facing as individuals and as families, Lord God, and it's weighing on their hearts and minds even right now. Holy Spirit, just meet them there. Meet them there. And I pray, Lord God, that you would draw everyone within the sound of my voice, Lord Jesus, close to your side today. That, Lord God, you would call us back to you as a people, or that we would learn to worship you again, Lord God, because, Lord, I know this, that when you take us up to be with you in worship, Lord, when we worship, we see what you see. Lord, you know things that we need to know. You've been places we haven't been, and so we need to be with you in your spirit. So take us each one to that place, Lord God, with you, that you invite us and you call us to so graciously and so patiently, so lovingly, Lord God. Do that for each one within the sound of my voice this morning, Lord, I pray. Now to him who is able to do immeasurably more above all that we could ask or imagine according to your power that is at work within us, to you be the glory in your church right here in Bradenton, and in Christ Jesus, I pray, and in your holy name I say, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call the meeting to order. Ms. Beauchamp.
Good morning. We do have a proclamation this morning that I'll read on the mayor's behalf. By virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Bradenton, I do hereby issue this proclamation honoring Farm City Week, November 7th through 20th, 2020. Whereas the prosperity and the well-being of the citizens of the city of Bradenton are highly dependent upon essential agricultural workers, from those planting and harvesting to owners, operators, managerial, and supporting positions. And whereas this year's Farm City Week celebration will highlight originally essential workers, ag is here to stay and will honor the past, present, and future of Manatee County's essential agricultural workers, a vital contributor to the economy of our city. And whereas Manatee County is in the midst of a pandemic in 2020 during which all agricultural workers are essential and had to make adjustments to continue to bring food to our tables, UF IFAS Extension Manatee County Agents, farmers market staff, and other essential agricultural workers worked on alternative ways to move produce from the farm to consumers and to food banks when normal distribution channels were disrupted by the pandemic. And whereas Manatee County has 753 farms, 91% of them are family farms, and 28% of the farm's higher farm labor, production agriculture takes place on over 239,000 acres in the county. And whereas Manatee County is ranked second in the state for market value of agricultural products sold for vegetables, melons, potatoes, and sweet potatoes, and 12th in the nation, crops overall are ranked fourth in the state, and livestock, poultry, and products rank 14th in the state. And whereas Manatee County's agricultural production is large and diverse, with vegetable crops, ornamental horticulture, livestock and forage, citrus and commercial fishing, and seafood aquaculture, total market value of agricultural products sold is over $360 million. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Wayne H. Poston, as mayor of the city of Bradenton, Florida, do hereby proclaim November 7th through 20th, 2020, as Farm City Week, and urge all citizens to recognize the economic, social, and cultural contributions of agriculture and all essential agricultural workers. Signed, Wayne H. Poston, Mayor. And I believe we have someone here to speak on this behalf?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Good morning. That was very well read. Good morning, Mayor, Councilman, Councilwoman. It's great to be here again and all with you. It's, yeah, it's an upside-down year, be no doubt about that and everything. It is affected agriculture. We got hit really, really, really hard at the beginning in April and May when we had all our spring crops come in and nowhere to go with the food. A lot of people got aggravated and said, gee whiz, you know what, you're tilling the fields up and everything. Well, we have markets set up all over the Northeast, and when those markets shut down, we really didn't have a secondary market. We just don't do that in agriculture, and so we had no choice but just to save the time and labor. But I will say this, you know, we're coming back of the 239,000 acres in Manatee County. I think that's going to be a little bit higher, because about every bit of every piece of farmland in Manatee County is going to be used. Agriculture is planting like they've never planted before. I think we're going to have a terrific market this upcoming winter and in this fall. I gave you a gift of some tomatoes. Those are the first picked in Manatee County. Let them sit on the windowsill. Don't refrigerate them like that. They'll ripen. It may take three, four, or five days, but I'll let the mayor distribute to amongst his friends here that can have some, and they're ripe. They're green. They're not rotten. I didn't bring any rotten tomatoes here today to pitch at politicians. I just want to thank you with gratitude that y'all are accepting a Farm City Week resolution. Again, Gene mentioned he's got 29 coffee mugs and everything, so let me tell you a little bit about the committee, what we're doing, then I'll let you all go ahead and everything. It was tough. We met virtually and everything, and we had to redesign practically everything that we do, because all of Farm City Week is hands-on, it seems. And so we came up with some brilliant ideas, some really great thinking by people and everything. For example, we're going to have an ag venture where we usually get over 1,000 third graders at the fairgrounds to learn about all aspects of agriculture. We're taking it to the classrooms. We're giving them kits, and they're going to grow vegetable plots this year. And it's actually, it's about a seven-day process program, plus the growing end of it and everything. So we're getting a little bit more than just the three hours that they'd be out at the fairgrounds and all. Kewanis is meeting virtually, but we're going to go ahead and have three people introduced to, actually, four people, introduced to the Manti County Hall of Fame, Agricultural Hall of Fame. They are Cully Rowl, a rancher from out in Maica, and then the three Dakin brothers from Dakin Dairy. Unfortunately, one of them has died recently and all, so there's four people going to be introduced in the Manti County Agricultural Hall of Fame. That's going to be done virtually. And then another aspect that we're going to do virtually is to take people, and they're signing up left and right, of a virtual tour of Manti County agriculture. I think we've picked four sites to have film, and it's an interaction. People can talk with the others at each farm and all. And instead of loading up four or five buses of people to take all around the county, it's just going to be you sign up and hit that Zoom button. We all know that and everything, and they're going to be able to tune in and see various parts of agriculture. The main thing is to get the word out between the rural and the urban areas and everything about agriculture and how we can come together and meet as one and everything. And I don't think Manti County has a lot of problem with agriculture. We chose essential farm workers, the first essential farm workers, because we can't do our job without the labor. You know, yes, it can get done, but are you going to go to the store and spend $8.89 for a pound of tomatoes? I don't think so like that. That's why we have to rely on these labors, these workers and everything, who will pick and work the fields and everything. They're our most valuable commodity as far as the farming end of it. We can get tractors and technology and research with disease and fertilizer, but the field picking and everything is who do we depend on, and those people just do a marvelous job at it. A lot of people say, oh, they live in low-income homes, or they live in shacks, or there's 15 of them underneath the bridge in a van. That's not quite so at all and everything. We provide housing. During the COVID, we've tested every single one of them. As they go into the fields, we're doing weekly testing. A lot of farms are with it. We just are starting to gear up right now with the picking and such and everything. But we are strong stewards of not only the land, but our people. That's what the Lord wanted us to do, is to help out those who are less than we. And so we do look after those people. We don't want to cut off our hand at all. So we're very fortunate, and that's what this year's theme is about, those workers. There is one hands-on activity that we're going to be doing, and that's a prospect show where the kids are able to bring in their steers. As you know, Manti County Fair, I think, is going to go on somewhat this year, and the cattle part is a real big, selling their steers and everything, a big part. Well, this prospects show that Ms. Kirby has set up is one of the best in the state of Florida, where they learn how to groom their steers, how to feed them, how to properly take care of them and all. So that's going to occur, and that's going to be the only in-person type of situation we had, and she had to get special approval to present that. And that's at the Manti County Fairgrounds. Unfortunately, closed to the public. Sorry, you know, and everything. That's just, again, the sign of the times. But, and summing up, I think you're going to find that agriculture's always been the second economic engine, not only in Manatee County, but also the state of Florida, as far as cash draw and local revenue and everything. And I think you're going to find that it's going to come probably ahead of tourism because of this COVID situation this year and all. So it's a balance back and forth. If we're back normal, no, tourism's always going to be number one. But I think you're going to find an economic boom from this side of, the other side of the engine there, or the second engine, in agriculture. It's going to be providing coffers for the county and the state, and even the city of Bradenton's going to get some feedback from it too and everything. So I'm excited about it, and I appreciate, again, the time that I'm able to come forward with you and speak with you and everything. And Ms. Barnaby's listened to my stump speeches so many times. You know what I'm going to end with? Do you want to say it? You want me to say it?
Go dogs.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying now, too. Absolutely and everything. I'm sorry to hear. Your team's got so many illnesses. You got to watch out, how many girls are kissing? They got some, Gainesville, Gainesville's a party town, like that. Never speak poorly about the farmer when your mouth's full of food. Again, thank you very much, and thank you for the reading of the proclamation. Everyone have a happy Thanksgiving, and eat well, and it's going to be coming right around the corner. Thank you. Stay safe.
Ralph, thank you so much for coming and reminding everybody just how important agriculture is to this community.
Thank you.
And I know you had a tough, tough time, just like lots of businesses, but ag didn't get mentioned very often. But I know that honoring the Dakin brothers is really terrific. You know, they were, you talk about plowing under your crops because we couldn't sell them. The Dakin brothers were dumping thousands of gallons of milk all during that time because there's just nobody to sell that stuff.
They were. And, you know, they didn't get the publicity of a corporation losing or, you know, a resort area. No one's staying at that and everything. And, yeah, we're very proud and everything. They are actually the only dairy farm in Manti County right now, isn't a lot of dairy farmers and everything. They've stuck with it over the years and deservingly so and everything like that, and they lost one of their brothers because of the nasty virus that's going around like that. And I will say, you know, thanks for your all's appreciation. I know there's a couple of cowboys in here. It's going to be riding away here pretty soon after, perhaps after the elections and everything. Over the years, I appreciate your support and all with this Farm City Week and what you have to say about it also with it. And the other one, what's the other saying? Well, I'll leave it at that and everything like that. It was, you know, the wealth of a community or wealth of the country lies very near the soil. That was a statement Benjamin Franklin made also and everything. So appreciate the support in the years and everything like that, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. All right.
We have the consent agenda. Well, we have no presentations.
Okay. We're to point the meeting of citizen comments. Anyone who wishes to address the council on any agenda or non-agenda item, please come forward. Anyone who wishes to speak to council? Anyone at all? Ms. Beauchamp, we have any phone calls?
No, sir, we did not.
Okay. Thank you. Let's move on.
Now we're ready for the consent agenda items A through C.
Move for approval. Second.
We have a motion, second, to approve consent agenda. Are in discussion? Hearing none, let's vote. Ward one.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
Consent agenda's approved. The vote's five to zero. Ms. Beauchamp?
Under business advertising petitions hearings and communications, we have the second reading and public hearing of ordinance number 3074. An ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida extending the temporary moratorium on the offering for hire of motorized scooters or micro-mobility devices, or issuance of any authorizations, permits, or franchises pertaining to micro-mobility adopted pursuant to ordinance 3055 and extended pursuant to ordinance 3062, and providing that said moratorium shall remain in effect until May 9th, 2021, or shall terminate on the effective date of the city's adoption of an ordinance to regulate motorized scooters or micro-mobility devices. And again, this is a public hearing. We'll be asking for your vote today. The current moratorium expires on November 9th. The city's received a draft of the ordinance that we are going to be looking at, and we're providing feedback back and forth, and we'll be making a presentation on that to you shortly.
Carl, you want to do anything before we open the public hearing? Anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this ordinance? Anyone in favor? Anyone in favor? Anyone in opposition to this ordinance? Anyone in opposition? In opposition? Hearing none, close the public hearing. Chair wants to say the motion, I guess.
Motion approved.
Second. We have a motion, the second, to approve ordinance number 3074. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote. Ward two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Ordinance 3074 is approved. The vote's five to zero. Ms. Beauchamp?
There's no new business, and there's no unfinished business to present today.
In that case, we'll move on to council reports. Mr. Gallo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had one thing to bring up. We had a project several years ago called Maribella's on the golf course in Village Green, and the fire department had required a second exit on the, we're going to use on the south side of the project, used to be the old service entrance to the golf course. And unfortunately, they couldn't find out who owned the property. Maribella built the road up to the end of his property and put the gate there that was required, but it took quite a while to find out who owned the property, and it kind of got fumbled around. Well, it has been found that Lenar Homes owns that property, and they're willing to donate it to the city, or actually to anybody, I think was their terminology, so that road can be completed. So I assume, Carl, do we need to have a vote for the council to prove that?
Yes, I think you should have a vote.
Okay. So what I'd like to do this morning is to move that the city, that we, I guess you use the terminology negotiate with Lenar Homes, but get the property and get the ownership of it, and that we go ahead and pave that road and even, probably since it's in the middle of a neighborhood like it is, do a little bit of curb work. Could we do that without? Okay. Pave it and put a little bit of curb work on it, so we'll have that emergency exit that we should have had.
So donate means $0?
That's correct. They're just saying, you want it, we'll give it to you.
Do we have a second? I missed it.
Yeah, second on that.
It's not a long roadway. We're talking 150 feet. The length of a lot is really what it is, in depth.
Do we have a motion, a second, to approve that? Any more discussion? Hearing none, let's vote. Ward three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. That's probably my last project that will be, that I'll bring forward to this council. It's great to go out winning.
As a former fire chief and as a councilman.
There you go.
Anything else, Ms. Gallo?
No, I'm sorry, no. I apologize.
Ms. Barnaby. Councilwoman Barnaby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I don't sound like a Muppet. I'll take this off just briefly. The only thing I wish to say is that I wish everyone a happy and safe Halloween holiday. I don't anticipate a lot of people coming door to door this year. I think that's probably best and safest, but still want everyone to have a fun time if you can. That's it.
Ms. Roth?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Carl Callahan for reaching a milestone in American, you know, achievement yesterday, now being eligible for the, you know, hope-to-be-around-for-a-few-years social security system, which I'm looking forward to in a year and a half myself.
Medicare-eligible, yeah.
Anyway, congratulations on that, Carl. I'd like to compliment Jim and Public Works for helping out. We had a neighborhood issue with a dumpster that we thought belonged to the city, turns out belonged to a facility, but it was long past its prime, and I guess the city's going to go ahead and take care of it. The lids have disappeared years ago, and the raccoons are having a heyday with it. So thank you for that. And lastly, I'd like someone to, I've got an issue coming up. Someone was going to come in and speak today, but I'll see if we can't address this without citizens' comment. In the Village of the Arts overlay district, this person's been having an issue with, she bought the property and family issues, and now a deceased mother is trying to open a gallery. But next door to her is a rental property with four units and a house, and one of them is operating a commercial business. When I say commercial, I'm talking about, you know, equipment that exceeds our, the commercial size and length and making noise and all that stuff. I know that PD's been involved. They've been very helpful. But there seems to be not an agreement in the planning department as to how to correct this and/or what's allowed. I know that in a normal neighborhood in the city of Bradenton, you're not allowed to do this type of activity, and I think the overlay has special exceptions to it as well. So I'd like for someone to do a little research on that, and maybe we can fix that so that she won't have to come in and ask us for assistance or find out what the rules are that I can relay them back to her.
I'll look into it. I hadn't been notified of that.
Is this the property where the trucks come in behind?
It's, yes. It's commercial landscaping and noise, gasoline, fumes, garbage, rats.
It needs addressed.
That's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes. This is my first meeting with affordable housing. I've been asked to present to council if they would write a letter to the school board to waive impact fees on any affordable housing projects within the city. Is that something that the council would agree to sign off on, each councilman or through the mayor or the city administrator's office?
I don't know that the school board can do that, but we could certainly ask them. I don't think under law they can do it.
They've been waiving some stuff, but it's been on a, one project at a time. If you go to them, and they will waive it if it meets those guidelines, certain guidelines. But they would like to have it so that they can sell it to people that want to build affordable housings and make it more of a policy versus a one-on thing.
What they're looking for is, is yes, absolutely. Currently, if you go to the superintendent's office, if you have a one-off issue, that she has the ability to waive things under certain circumstances. There are, within the Manatee County ordinance, certain exceptions for that, that if there was a previous building in a certain area that's been demoed since 2001 or '02, then it is exempt under statute. What the Affordable Housing Committee, in keeping with their mission of trying to help promote affordable housing, is, and we know that the largest single impact fee is the school board impact fees, and asking that either the school board through policy or through a request and change in ordinance, whatever it would be that would be necessary to make that happen, to make there be a whole lot more instances where affordable housing can get that break, rather than just, there have been lots that have been vacant forever, in which case they may not qualify. So they're looking for that type of things, or where you increase the size from a two or three units that may have had a couple of kids there to now maybe four, five. But in our infill situations, those are not dramatic changes in numbers that we're seeing. So we're hoping to be able to help that, and that's in keeping with the committees, and they ask our representative to see if they could, if we could reach out to the school board and ask for that. It seemed like a good idea.
Is that something that you would write the letter, the mayor, or the councils, or mention that the council has discussed this and we?
I couldn't write the layer, the letter, from that perspective, and what I think probably best is probably the mayor, me, and you all sign it as the representative, as the city representative on the affordable housing.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. That's all I have.
Anything else? Ms. Burke?
Nothing to report.
Really? I have one thing. Ms. Barnaby sent me an email that we have been dealing with at Bradenton Police Department. Our chaplain, Pastor Don Steriano, is in the running to win a Dream Chopper designed by Paul Tootle, senior of Orange County Choppers. If he wins, he will be featured in episodes in the near future. Of course, Pastor Don thought outside the box and wanted a chopper to highlight law enforcement. So if he wins, he will be receiving a police chaplain chopper. Purpose behind a chopper like this is to give back to the community by highlighting it at events in our annual Honoring the Badge, parades, and other events we attend regularly. Pastor Don really selflessly serves our agency in casting a vote for him, and it's simple and always takes some minutes. So we will, and chief?
And unlike Tuesday's election, you can vote both.
Yes. Lots of times.
There's my age of voting. I think this is a great thing for our city. I think it could brand us nationwide. We were in first. We were in first place yesterday, second place today. So I encourage everybody to go on Facebook and, and vote every day. You can vote every 24-hour. I just, I think that this is a wholesome and positive thing. Mr. Sanders, I, I know you reached out to see if you could repost it on your Facebook page. We appreciate it, so.
We'll, we'll try to get the link on so people can vote off our website. We can do that. It's interesting too, Pastor Don, you all met him and seen him. He is a motorcycle guy. He's been a motorcycle rider for several years. So he's particularly excited about trying to get this deal done, so. Vote often and vote early. Remember, we're voting next Tuesday, so just keep voting and voting on this thing. So thank you. And that's all I have. Department heads, Ms. Poshant?
Just briefly, I want to let you know that during November, the notices will be going out that you can pay your utility bills at Walmart. That is all set up and ready to go. And the instructions will be coming. Just need an account number when you go to Walmart and you can pay your water bill there. So a lot of folks are excited about that and that is actually geared up and ready to go. The other thing, very briefly, is that Zoom is working in this room. However, there's one piece of equipment that allows us to put the pictures that are on the podium on your monitor so you can see what a presenter is actually presenting in front of you. They brought a piece on Monday. It didn't work correctly. They also brought a piece that belonged to City of Sarasota and tried it and it did work. So we are ordering our own. You'll notice if you follow Sarasota's social media that they have started Zoom meetings today. So they got the piece of equipment that we needed, but it is around the corner. So, and in the meantime, we can find a workaround for that part of the function if there was a need to have a Zoom meeting between now and the time that that equipment arrives. So we're almost there, almost there.
Ms. Poshant, there is a, just so the public knows, there is a $2 charge for the water bill.
There is, but we are going to be waiving that. Right now, we waive the AMSCOT fees because our front desk is not open. And we'll, we'll waive the $2 Walmart fee until that time.
Anything else, Ms. Poshant?
That's it, thank you.
Do you have anything? Chief?
As Ms. Barnaby was saying, Halloween, I won't give my normal speech about safety out there. I do think we're going to see a decrease in kids out there. However, noteworthy, BPD will be participating in the Crime Stoppers Halloween. Candy giveaway out at the fairgrounds will be out there. I guess I'll be out there instead of my driveway Saturday evening. We encourage anybody who wants to stop by. We have a feeling there's going to be a lot of kids out there this year. So it's a great opportunity for us to interact with our kids and see.
Chief, anything?
Let me get this turned on, Taylor. Just two things. I sent out a notice to y'all. This is concerning HTG and their affordable housing, senior and regular family project. As you're all very aware, we thank you that last meeting, we approved the, to be able to contribute towards a project down on Ninth and, and Manatee for the purpose of then saying senior housing. HTG, in concert with a little bit of the planning staff, started talking about what the options really could be for that site and whether it could indeed qualify for something other than senior housing because of the close proximity to downtown. They found out that they could indeed make it a multifamily, regular family affordable housing, rather than exclusively senior housing. And because of the nature that I think when I was up here before, I asked for senior housing, I thought it was appropriate to bring it back to council and say, would you have an issue if that application went, went in as not senior housing, but regular, just affordable housing? I think to all of you, the kind of the response has been back to me, just whenever I've seen, yeah, sounds like even better, thank you, that's a better deal. That's more of what we think we wanted anyway. But I wanted to come back for your official approval of that to say, yes, we are fine with them switching their application from senior housing just to regular affordable housing. I need a motion from that, since we had a motion before to approve senior housing.
I have a motion.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Roth?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's actually great news. I know when, when it was proposed for senior housing, I mean, I, I like the idea, but really for the close proximity to downtown, we really, we really need to turn it into, you know, workspace for our downtown employees in the future that they can, you know, walk to work downtown and not necessarily leave their cars parked, which is the true benefit of new urbanism. Thank you, Carl.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, I, I, just one comment. I talked to one of the representatives on yesterday concerning the project. And they also voiced that it's not that they're giving up on senior housing. And they just wanted to do, use that particular location for a different type of a project. I just want it to be said that it's not like we're not addressing senior housing. And they're looking at a site that's further down, which is in an area that's really in need of redevelopment. So I just wanted to make mention of that. And I was very concerned about that and that they were not abandoning the idea of some type of senior housing, senior housing. Thank you.
So do we have a vote?
We have.
We have no vote.
Motion and a second.
Motion and a second.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, let's vote. Word four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Great.
Yes.
Motion is approved, votes five to zero.
Thank you, Ms. Byrne, for that excellent lead-in. The second I, I have to discuss is HTG's request because they did find another site. They are not abandoning senior housing. They have found another site that they think they have site control over to be able to put a senior housing project on. Not the same type of tax credit application. This is to request sale funds. So it's not the same issue that we had with the $460,000 contribution. It is for a sale fund, which is a cheaper funding source or a 4% type issue where, and it's generally non-competitive, not the lottery type system. The location of the site that they're requesting to use is here in the map. It is this site over here. If you, if you picture what's down there, LeCom is up to the top. This is the Benny Warehouse Site. Over here is a, is a car, what you look at a car lot, probably most recognizable is the big yellow sign that says SRQ Motors as you go by. It's a rather large assemblage in there, all owned by one, one property owner. HTG is wanting to put a senior housing complex in there. Their request to us, which we've approved in the past on several projects, is in order to be eligible for the sale type application, you have to have a contribution from the city or proposed contribution from the municipality of 37-5. In this particular instance, there is the option, instead of just giving 37-5, of waiving fees. Since it is senior affordable housing, I anticipate that under our program, we would easily be waiving $37,500 worth of impact fees and that does qualify. That is my recommendation is that we would approve that. We would sign a form that says we would be contributing up to $37,500 in impact fee waivers. So my recommendation is approval. This is a, a neighborhood that needs a lot of help. When you picture what's around it, FOP on one side, all the way between Ninth and Fourteenth needs, needs this kind of infusion, very similar to what Grant Palm is trying to do on Fourteenth Street. So we would hope that it, they would be successful. And I think if we're, if we are, if they are successful, 37-5 is a minor contribution to be able to make that happen.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve the project. Any more discussion? Hearing none, let's vote. Word five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Approved, votes five to zero.
Just on one.
You're batting 100.
Well.
It bursed in.
Okay. I am good with that. I just want to break up one thing that I think whether it's through today or through a future workshop, I think because of, of what happened with our, with our planning director withdrawing, that we're going to need to address how we want to handle that and what particular options may be available. Those options are various and I want you to just think about them. Whether we go out and look to a third party, potential consultant, we would probably have both the executive director of the CRA and this that we could maybe dovetail and send some money. Whether we wanted to go back, we had previous candidates, whether we wanted to go back to previous candidates and look at them as options. It's certainly an option without going out for that on the, the third-party consult. Staff is more than willing to reach out to, to that person to see if there's still interest, if there's still, if there's any interest on city council in pursuing that avenue. So what I'm just afraid of is we're going to run into the holidays and we want to get the ball rolling before we get into holidays so we don't wait too long on the other side coming out.
I'd suggest we discuss it today since it's only nine o'clock. I've never seen a meeting get over this early. Why, why bring everybody back?
That's strictly up the count. I didn't want, wasn't an agenda item, didn't want to.
Yeah, I understand, but it, this is, we're going pretty smooth here. Maybe we can get something done here.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Yeah, you know, Carl, you and I obviously discussed this, that, that we, as far as the planning director goes, you know, that's, that's one slot. We still have the CRA director, which I believe we need to, to throw a much wider net and a better net. And then, you know, down the road, we're talking about, you know, the possibility of a city administrator, which, you know, we have the booklet here. That I, I, I mentioned years ago that we, you know, entertain the idea of having professional services, you know, somewhat of a headhunters to go out, this is what they do for a living, to, to help us with this. And I, I think at this point in time, we should probably discuss that because it's not just one slot. I, I'm fully in agreement that we can reach out to, we had two candidates for the last slot and we went back and forth. And, you know, I'd be, I'd be willing to entertain, to see if that person's still interested. But that still leaves the other slots to be filled that I think we start a relationship, you know, like what we start with, let's say Jones Edman, that, you know, that, that we start using them in the future. I know years down the road, we're going to be looking at a fire, a fire chief, you know. I think the sooner we get this into our, our mindset and our, our business plan, the better, in my opinion.
And that is why when I reached out, when I started looking at the resources, the ICMA wasn't to say we haven't done those kind of things. It was just a kind of a white paper on the processes and things that are out there. So I said, well, heck, let's just distribute that. We hadn't really gotten too deep into how the process really works and the various options and ways you can look at either using things in-house, using hybrid policies, using all kinds of things to look at what you may want to do. You'd previously asked me to look at who may be out there when it comes to this. And there are, there, there's hundreds of them. There are. I mean, you know, there are, they're all over the place. But I wanted to look and see who is doing really work in Florida or in the South or in a, in a reasonable way that has reached out to us in the past or has reached out through Florida League of Cities. And there's really three that come to mind. One is Strategic Government Resources, and like I've indicated before, they're out of Dallas, but have a sub-office in Lakeland. Slavin is out of Norcross, Georgia, which is just a suburb of Atlanta. And they do quite a lot of work. And then there's Colin Benziger, who is based out of Daytona Beach. If you look at their, their resumes, so to speak, and their client list, one jumps out above all others as to who does the kind of work that we're really looking at. Slavin and Strategic Government do a lot of administrators, probably lesser positions as you get into their areas of expertise, I mean, Texas or Georgia or whatever else. Colin Benziger does a lot in Florida, planners, fire chiefs, police chiefs, clerks, administrators, a ton of stuff. So you look, just wanted to mention that, that, that they do and are very local, have reached out and talked to them before, talked to Strategic Government Resources before in person, had not talked to Slavin directly. So those are options. There's others, but those seem to be the, the ones that jump out at you. And all are similarly priced with similar services, and all of which require, don't think it's just a, you pick somebody and you go. It requires a lot of input. And that was part of that thing from the government body itself, deciding how we want to present our city. Because what it is, is becomes a profile of your city. And then they like to do discussions with you guys to figure out what your feelings are and what kind of person you want to hire. And that's where it comes into the ideal candidate. So when they're starting to go through the process of interviewing or initial interviews, looking at resumes, maybe even reaching out to people they know or in the industry that may be, be available, that they have a good understanding of what you're looking for. Not just a body, somebody that's going to fit your needs. So that's, that's what they, they specialize in from that perspective.
Well, and on that note, Carl, you know, I received another batch of CRA applicants and no one's even anywhere near close to the qualifications we put out there. I, you know, I guess these, I mean, why not, why not try for a job? But, you know, there's just no, they're not even in, in, in the ballpark or, or, you know, baseball, football, soccer of, you know, what we're looking for. It's that, that, what I see with a professional like this is they know what's out there. And as you and I have talked, you know, if, if it weren't for COVID, I'd be out, you know, using the League of Cities or the FRA to try to figure out if there is any applicants out there that are kind of in a, in a spot. But because of COVID, I, I can't even network right now. So I, I think it's, you know, for CRA slot, I'd like, I'd like to get moving on this. And if we can, whether, whether for the planning director or not, you know, we might need that and we're going to need this in the future. So I, I'd like to see if there's discussion from the board on, on getting the ball going on you, you starting the process of getting us to hire someone to, to help us with this.
Council, we'll have a motion on this and you give.
I have a motion to do that.
I'll second discussion. I guess one of the things I've always supported, trying to move in a expedited manner on all of the positions. And so, you know, the only thing I've been sort of holding back, I realize council, you know, even though there's a good possibility we can start the process right now, I think it'll be up to the majority of council that are going to look at seeing the whole, I guess the process come to a close and hire individuals for those positions. But I support, I think it's to the point now, we, you know, as far as those top positions, we need several of them over the next few months. And my position is, is yes, I support trying to, you know, have, I guess, a consultant or someone to help us with the process. Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second to have the city administrator hire or fine?
Planning director.
Planning director, that's all, just planning director. Nothing else? No CRA?
Well, no, 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 starting, starting a relationship with the agency to help us, you know, we have, we have.
You can decide who you want to include in the net of potential hires if you decide to use a consultant, which is.
Right.
The basis.
And that's, that's my position.
Mr. Callahan has to find a consultant.
Consultant, right.
And that's, that's one job. And then did we want to have a discussion also as to whether the council wants to go back and talk about the other, you know, choice number two, you know, seeing if, if that person's still interested? If not, we can throw them into the, so two questions.
It's a great question because you, I think you will potentially have an administrator, you will potentially have, we know, an executive director. So there's several avenues. And that's one thing when I'm negotiating or talking to people, I want to be able to say, look, can we talk price? Because the community profile is going to be the same. There's a difference in each particular job, but the profile, a lot of the legwork right up front that we have to do with you all and staff is, is, is very similar.
I think, Mr. Roth, if you hire the consultant, the consultant will do, take a look at what you're suggesting. See if that's in the best interest of the city.
If you want to ask them that or not, Mr. Mayor, I mean, we have gone down that path on that, on the second person, whether that's something the council wants to look at. To inject them back into that, I think would not be fair to that consultant who has not done any of that legwork.
Yeah.
You know, to, I mean, if, if you decide not to move forward, then certainly that's a different issue.
Right. So, so the first motion right now is for, to you to talk to an agency.
A consulting.
A consulting, consulting agency.
A third, a third-party consultant for future jobs within the city.
And then we can visit the second one after that.
Okay. Everybody understand the motion?
Yeah.
Any more questions? Hearing none, let's vote. Word one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
Motion is approved, five to zero.
Okay.
That's my piece of it.
Well, Carl, so we, should we move into this? I make a motion that we have HR reach out to the choice number two and see if that person is still interested.
That's, that's. I'll second that.
Just to be clear in your motion, which number two for what job?
Planning director. Sorry, thank you.
Planning director, right. I'm opposed to that.
Okay.
Who is number two?
We have a.
Karen.
The young lady.
We have a motion and a second. So I guess that's, well, you don't have any, have any more discussion about that? Let's vote, Ward two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
No.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
We will reach out.
Motion is approved, vote three to two.
There is no guarantee that they're still interested. It's been a while.
I, I would be surprised if she is, but she said she was look, still looking for a job.
Right.
Anything else, Mr. Callahan?
No, I think the other thing, will probably, because under CRA business, it will be the CRA's responsibility to say, yes, we'd like to dovetail in on that and utilize that consultant.
Scott, do you have anything? So, anybody else have anything for the, for the order? Hearing none? Return.